Hey, Mr. Mayor, we are live and ready when you are.
All right, sounds good. We'll go ahead and get started here. Call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Saldovia City Council Monday, November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Time is six thirteen P. M. And we'll go ahead and do roll call. Peyton.
Here, sorry, new buttons to learn.
No worries. Uh, Barber.
Here.
Langbart.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Okay, we do have, uh, four present, two excused absences tonight in, uh, members Keith Lee and Taylor. So we do have a quorum and we will move forward. And if you could lead us off, um, Lizard Heidi with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and.
All right, thank you. Um, as I mentioned, we have members Keith Lee and Taylor both gone tonight on excused absences. Take us to item D. I'll look for a motion, um, to go ahead and approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Langbart to approve tonight's agenda. We have a second by Coleman. Any further discussion on the agenda approval before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of tonight's agenda. All those in favor. Peyton?
Aye.
Barber? Langbart?
Aye.
And Coleman?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes four in the affirmative and two absent. That'll take us to item E consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are approved with a single motion, no discussion, and one vote. A council member may request remove an item for discussion and a separate vote. Any items removed from the consent agenda will be placed under new business. Tonight's consent agenda consists of item one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, November tenth, twenty twenty five. Item two, A ordinance twenty six dash zero eight, an ordinance to the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska, amending chapter seventeen point zero four. Building code adopting chapter eighteen point six six, site development standards and repealing eighteen point three two point one zero zero, eighteen point three six point zero nine zero, eighteen point four zero point one one zero, eighteen point four four point one zero zero, eighteen point forty eight point one one zero, eighteen point fifty two point one two zero and eighteen point fifty six point one zero zero visibility at intersections. This will be recommended for public hearing on December fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Next item on the consent agenda is item two B ordinance twenty six dash zero nine, a non-code ordinance of the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska, amending F Y twenty twenty six, fee schedule to include additional building and site development permit, application fees and fees for abatement. This is also recommended for a public hearing on December fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Next item on the consent agenda is item three, A. This will be resolution twenty six dash zero eight, a resolution of the city council of the city of Saldovia, establishing the twenty twenty six regular meeting schedule for the city, for the Saldovia City Council and the Saldovia Planning Commission. Uh, last item on the consent agenda is item three B. This will be resolution twenty six dash zero nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Saldovia, adopting an alternative allocation method for the F Y twenty six shared fisheries business tax program and certifying that this allocation method fairly represents the distribution of significant effects of fisheries business activity in F M A fourteen Cook Inlet area. All right, that is the consent agenda this evening. Does any member wish to remove any item off of the consent agenda for further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and look for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Consent agenda.
Okay.
I second that motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda by Langbart. We have a second, um, by member Coleman. Any further discussion on the approval of tonight's consent agenda before we vote? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor. Peyton?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Motion carries with four in the affirmative, two excused. All right, thank you, everyone. That was the approve approval of tonight's consent agenda. Item F, mayoral proclamations. We have none tonight. Item G, public presentation prior notice. Uh, Liz, I don't see anybody on there. I assume that's still the same.
It's still the same, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, item H, public presentation for items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on item H tonight?
We have nobody signed up to speak online, and I'm not seeing anyone in the room.
Okay, sounds good. And let's see, that'll take us to item I, commission advisory board reports. We have none. Item J, administrative reports. We do have item J one, the finance report. This will be your monthly written report. And this is found on page forty seven of your packet. Everyone wants to take a moment and review that if you haven't had the opportunity to do so? Going over everything, it appears that for this type of time of year coming up on the halfway point here, things are looking about as expected here. Heidi, I know Jan's not here. Did you have any comments or any any tidbits you wanted to share? I don't see anything too, uh, too super alarming here.
Uh, nothing alarming, Mr. Mayor. Everything is, uh, pretty status quo.
Okay. Any questions from anyone on council regarding tonight's, um, finance report? Okay, I appreciate that. That'll moves down to item K, public hearings. We have item K one, ordinance twenty six dash zero seven, an ordinance to the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska, amending Saldovia Municipal Code, Chapter eight point zero six, for abatement of public nuisances and abandoned property. This was introduced at our last meeting on eleven ten, twenty twenty five, and I'll go and turn this over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, as mentioned, this was introduced at the last meeting, uh, and there was a work session a few meetings prior to that regarding this ordinance. Um, at the work session, there was a question about where these definitions and some of the language came from. It does come from um, the city of Wasilla and through our attorney's office. So, um, this was a, a draft ordinance provided by um, our legal and there haven't been any changes since it was introduced. So, um, still stands as as discussed at the last meeting. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, sounds good. Go ahead and bring it back to council for discussion. Uh, yeah, there was, uh, obviously a lot of changes on this, uh, from where it originally started, um, a lot of, um, stuff that was clarified. We've got a lot of tweaks, obviously, uh, underlying and bold was added. Anything with a strike through will be deleted. So, um, if any council members had any questions or comments, now would be the time. I'll just offer a couple of comments. Yeah, I went through this again. Um, obviously, a lot of, uh, definitions were expanded, cleaned up. So, and again, as I said last time, yeah, nothing will be, um, perfect, but this was something that's been in the works for a while. Uh, we needed to get a good starting point. Um, and again, I think it goes goes a long way, um, to clarify things, uh, around the abatement nuisance, all of that stuff, and then gives the city uh, administration a tool for enforcement, um, plenty of opportunity for, uh, folks impacted by this or that, you know, that have an issue to work with the administration to remedy the problem. So, um, at this, uh, this time, I will be in support of, uh, ordinance twenty six dash zero seven. Anyone else with any comments or questions regarding ordinance twenty six dash zero seven?
Um, Mayor, okay.
Yep, go ahead, Meg.
Sure. I guess this might be a more question for Heidi. Um, so I was recently down at Jackaloff Bay Dock. I don't know if this is appropriate to to comment here. Um, but I believe since it's part of city property, um, the old Jackaloff Dock is so smelly from the, um, all the decaying. Uh, what? Everything decaying on that dock is incredibly smelly. So I don't know if that is, I'm just mentioning it here just because I don't know if that's um, a public nuance nuisance, I mean. Uh, I've, um, been asked by a couple of the Mako's captains when uh, that might be removed because you can smell it clear on Jackaloff Bay Hill. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Uh, through the mayor. Yes, thank you. So the dock has been staged on the beach to be removed with the rest of the project. So it will, um, sit there until it can be removed when the rest of the dock can be removed. Uh, we don't have, uh, the means at this time to dispose of it of ourselves. So it was, um, moved out of the water before the rest of the project began because it was falling apart and needed, um, it was a hazard at that point. It needed to be removed. Um, but it is still included in the rest of that project. So it is currently staged there until the rest of the work is completed. Um, hopefully that is this fall. I was going to talk about it, uh, in the city manager's report, but since it came up, I just, uh, let you guys know that we did have our site visit from Marad today. Uh, they were here. Uh, check, it was really quick. Um, the associate just spent the day hanging out and doing some work in the office. Um, and she actually had some really great feedback about us being able to go ahead and order um, and move ahead with the project even though things aren't signed. So we're going to meet again next week with the rest of the team and um, work on trying to get some of that, the the float um, and pieces ordered ahead of time if we can and ensuring, you know, she she was able to easily identify that this was a big need that needs to get done sooner than later. So, uh, having them work with us to make sure we could do that is great. Um, but I'm sorry to say that that those that P, those pieces are pieces of the dock and they are there until we can remove dock.
Heidi, those have to be removed under, I I mean, under the auspices of the the demolition permit as part of the project. I mean, people can't just come and start taking pieces of that, right? Or?
Yes, correct, Mr. Mayor. So there are signs on it that are asking people to stay off of it, uh, because it is a liability. So tho- those pieces need to stay and sit until they are removed professionally as part of the construction project.
Okay, sounds sounds good. Um, yeah, since Meg opened the door and we do start talking about Jackaloff and Uplands and stuff, so this, what we're talking about here tonight, um, in ordinance twenty six dash zero seven, obviously, there's a number of of vehicles out there that, uh, I imagine there's a number of those that have not been operated for a long time. So, um, once we have this as a tool, we finalize our lease and all of that, and we start searching for owners, then there's a number of things that will come into play here for abandoned vehicles, et cetera. Now we will actually have, um, legal authority to deal with with all of that once, once all the pieces are in place here. So, Heidi, would you agree with that?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we are trying to work with D O T so that perhaps we can remove some of that property beforehand. Uh, I know that council member Barber has been working to get, uh, Representative Vance over here, um, and have a discussion about a few D O T things, but, um, certainly that one as well. So, uh, I did reach back out to our, uh, area representative for D O T, and I'm still waiting for a response from them, and I'm, I'll probably bug them when I'm in Anchorage uh, here in a couple of weeks, but, uh, certainly hoping to be able to move on that a little bit sooner than later as well to start that cleanup process. It did come up in the conversation, um, with the Marad representative today that, um, potentially maybe during that project demolition, if we time it right, we could use some of those same resources to remove vehicles. So I think there's some opportunity there. Um, it's just, uh, try and waiting for working towards getting everything to line up. But yes, this this ordinance would, uh, cover that property once we're under lease there at Jackaloff as well.
Perfect. All right, thank, thank you. Thanks, Meg. Uh, anyone else with any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I just had one question. Do we have any idea of what the notification processes and how lengthy that would have to be like? How long do we have to, um, make a public notice that this vehicle, you need to remove it before we can actually just go in and remove them?
Uh, through the mayor. Excellent question. It depends on the state of the vehicle. So if it's a, a public health emergency or it's a, it, um, you know, it's if it's, if it's an emerg- uh, emergency type situation, we can remove it within seventy two hours, um, or sooner, depending on the state of emergency. Um, and depen- if it's not a vehicle, it's like thirty days. So, um, it does stay here on the code. I can go back and look. And I have, um, I actually, from previously, when we've had to impound vehicles, we have a nice um, worksheet that we use in office. And of course, that's not in front of me, um, that has the different timelines for the impound notice. Um, and then the notice for auction and then, um, the notice that it has been auctioned. But if you look here, yep, so it is eight point zero six point one zero zero. Um, if the property is described here and remains unclaimed. So this is once it's, uh, once it's been impounded, right? So there's different timelines for impoundment, and then the eight point zero six point one zero zero is the timeline for um, auction of items after they've been impounded. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does. And I'm sorry, I was actually open right to that page. I I just, I missed that part. Thanks, Heidi.
I have a question. On the airport parking out here. I think it's posted that if the vehicle hasn't been moved in thirty days or, uh, I don't know. Does somebody know what that is? Because they'll impound them over a period.
Through the mayor, I'm not sure, but I can look into that. Yeah, I think his.
Sign posted there. You can't just leave the vehicle out of the airport parking lot indefinitely. And I think it's like thirty days of parking or something of that nature.
Yeah, I think it's posted thirty two the last time I I looked. I can't remember.
Which may apply for the same thing as the Jackaloff Bay if the D O T is involved with it.
Yes, we can look into that certainly. I think in this, this code is is thirty days, but.
My other question, and the removal of the dock, is that under contract right now? Or did the city take it upon itself to remove the dock?
It was not under contract. Thank you through the mayor. It's not under contract. Um, we removed it in-house. We did hire an individual to help us with it. Um, and we, yeah, we we cleared it with, um, Marad and the Army Corps and D N R and Fish and Wildlife. We posted the permitting information that we needed to. We followed all the permit requirements. Um, and we removed it in-house, um, because it was an emergency removal.
Okay, anyone else? Any additional questions on ordinance twenty six dash zero seven? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to public. Uh, Liz, anyone from the public signed up, uh, or in-house to speak on ordinance twenty six dash zero seven?
No one has signed up online, and I'm not seeing anybody in the room.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and bring ordinance twenty six dash zero seven back to council for final action. So if there's no further comments, then we'll look for a motion to approve.
I have a question on on the twenty six oh seven. The they're amending. I'm not sure I understand what they're amending here. If they're, are the whole ordinance, is this thing, are they gonna change the whole thing or what are we doing with it?
Up through the mayor. Yeah, so previously, so twenty six oh seven amends chapter eighteen point zero six abandoned property, which was an ordinance already in our code for vehicles. What this is doing is is amending that chapter to be public nuisances and abandoned property and broadens it beyond vehicles. Um, so that if there are other types of bub- public notices and you can see under, um, the definitions, like for instance, uh, definition A of abandon or abandonment, what that looks like, B junk vehicles, C junk vehicle parts, D junk, E trash, um, and if that's on, say, either city land, F or G other land in the city, what those remedies are and the enforcement for those situations, um, both vehicles and abandoned property or vacant buildings, um, if they're neglected and the whole process of an enforcement order cleanup. We can still do civil um, remedies or civil penalties if needed, uh, but just provides a little, it's a broader uh, ordinance than what we had previously because it includes property.
Okay, and that was my question.
Yeah, yep, this includes property, not just vehicles.
Okay, if there's no further discussion on ordinance twenty six dash zero seven, I'll look for a motion to approve that tonight.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve ordinance twenty six dash zero seven.
Okay.
I'll second that. Approval of ordinance twenty six dash zero seven.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of ordinance twenty six dash zero seven by Langbart. We have a second to that motion by Coleman. Any further discussion on ordinance twenty six dash zero seven before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of ordinance twenty six dash zero seven. All those in favor. Peyton?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Motion passes four in the affirmative with two being absent. All right, that takes care of item K one. Thank you, um, Heidi, for the staff's work on that and going through that process. Um, obviously, a lot of changes in there. Something comes up or is brought to the the city's attention. I'm sure you guys will bring it back to council if there's any issues or any unintended consequences there. So, but for now, that's good. I think we have, uh, made a lot of progress on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item L, unfinished business, none. Item M, new business, none. Item N, cities manager's report, and this will be in the laydown. This will be on age fifty, what is that?
Three.
Fifty three.
Just three.
Just three, three of the laydowns. That's all there is in the laydown.
No, three of the laydown.
Three, that's right. Sorry, I'm still, I'm only seeing out of one eye still, so it's a little challenging.
Oh, thank you for being with us, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so just a quick rundown of an update of city business here. Uh, as we mentioned, or as I mentioned just previously, that we had our site visit, um, from Marad today regarding the environmental assessment. They just like to put boots on the ground and make sure that there's nothing untoward that they couldn't see, um, beyond the pictures that they received. So that went well and was pretty short and quick. Uh, with our raw water transmission line, we had a kickoff meeting. I think that was last week. And we submitted an application to the University of Alaska to move the utility easement, um, or create a new utility easement alongside the right away, the, well, it's not a right away, it's a access easement up there. So, but it's easier for maintaining in the future. Uh, we have requested that we can abandon the existing pipe in the ground since there's fifty five years of growth on top of it. Um, they're gonna review that and see if that is doable. Um, and if so, then we'll just cap it and then install the raw water transmission line, um, in the new location. Otherwise, we may still have to remove it and, um, the team is prepared. Either way, uh, we are supposed to have that back by the end of December. That way, we can have sixty five percent design uh, finished by the end of February and construction is scheduled for May. So we're, we're trying to do this without any delays. Uh, and I think the surveyor was back over today and she was gonna do a little bit more work. They wanted a new drawing for that utility easement um, relocation, and she's doing some some work for the engineers. And I think East Road Services was supposed to come over today as well. I didn't see either of them, so I'm, I'll check in and see if they made it. Uh, they were gonna come over and just do, they dug a couple of quick holes while they were here, but they were gonna um, do a little bit more investigation just to make sure that there's nothing that would prevent us from putting that line in a new location. So that's very exciting. Uh, Fuel Facility Improvements Project is just waiting for the R F P to be finished. Uh, that's on me. I'm have it scheduled so we can get it done in December. I'm hoping to to have something to show you guys at the December fifteenth meeting. I don't think it needs a resolution for approval because you guys already did approve having an R F P issued. Um, but definitely want to make sure I bring it to you guys' attention when that goes out. Uh, unless you guys want to approve it by resolution, let me know. Uh, number eight, the multipurpose building. We're excited to say that the new generator and automatic transfer switch were installed along with five additional circuits for this, um, centerpiece of the building. Saldovia space still is connected, uh, now, no lights, but some outlets. Um, centerpiece of the building. Saldovia space still is connected. Uh, now, no lights, but some outlets and um the data room so we can. Keep internet, the fire hall still connected, except no outlets and police department same. So there's a little bit of more work that needs to be done. I've got a nice list of circuits. Um, so that we can expand on the work that has been done here in the near future. And we still have room for the seven more circuits, so we're working through that. I am sad to say that the generator we purchased was not a standby generator. That was something that um. Wasn't realized in discussion with several, you know, with the electricians we were working with and um and the company that we were working with and it's. It's on me. I should have known that there was a difference between a standby generator and an emergency generator. So it it didn't come with a. You know, built-in uh battery supply and power supply to keep it operating all the time, the panel on it. Um, however, we were able to put a trickle charger on it and keep it going um so that it will operate as a standby generator. If for some reason that that doesn't work in the future, it's pretty simple to go and turn, you know, we can leave it off and turn it on. It's like a simple, just switch it over. It's on and then it powers back up and everything goes like it's supposed to with the automatic transfer switch, so. Um, I am sorry to report that that was an a pretty big error on our part, on my part there. Um, but it works. It's working the way it's supposed to right now. And we're thankful that the freezers are on, the lights are on in here, the bathroom lights are on. Uh, and in half that lets in this room. And like I said, we have a little bit more work to do, but it's, we're making, we're made really great progress with that. Uh, for number ten. Uh, included with that is that we were uh set to receive an additional award from the State of Alaska for our senior meals program. And our finance officer um just put a plug out there that potentially some of that award could be used. Uh, for those additional circuits on the automatic transfer switch, the multipurpose building, so. We haven't been told how much that award's gonna be, but we're we're waiting to hear and we can present. Um, some oppor- options once we receive it. On number thirteen, we had the Water and Wastewater System Evaluation. Meeting with CRW. It was awarded to CRW, so we'll be working with them once again through VSW. Uh, had that meeting last week and they are planning to be in Saldovia December sixteenth through the seventeenth for the project. Uh, so that's pretty exciting. Be a team of four of them between VSW and CRW and I invited them to the employee appreciation party, so. Don't be surprised if they show up. They're pretty excited about that. Um. And they have a list of the nine projects that we submitted and we had a great conversation and they're prepared to come down and we'll open some manholes and they can camera and look in. And and give us a a great evaluation. They're supposed to, the purr is supposed to include a um. Well, we're supposed to get a purr for each project, so it's supposed to, it should help us be able to move forward. With each project and to hopefully more design engineering and construction phase, so that will be. Significant for the community since there's nine of them. I mean, it'd be significant if it's one, but it's really cool. There's nine of them. Uh, number fourteen, the SVFD repeat repeater. I did have it confirmed that it's been installed and it is up and working as of last Friday. Dispatch is still, they need to work on some internal um communication. Uh, procedures with the different tones and coming right from Homer and then transferring over to dispatch and. Ensuring that we don't have responders talking right back to Homer Dispatch and still keeping on our end, so. Still a little bit of work to do, but the actual um. Equipment is installed. The new repeater itself is not. We're waiting to ensure that this system works before we install the new repeater. Then we'll transfer over and we'll be able to get rid of that phone line that's at the school. So we'll no longer be reliant or able to use the Sensifone and that will save a little bit of money. I guess like a hundred fifty bucks a month. Um, which, you know, could eventually offset a lo- long, maybe to offset, but uh help cuz it was a an expensive, expensive project to get that done. And that's really it for our projects themselves. Streetlights, I wanna say that the repairs were made. We had a few requests for shields. They don't automatically do those, so if there's a streetlight in your neighborhood and you wanna shield on it, let us know. Um, and we can make a request for that. Um, they were able to put those shields on, the ones that were requested already and they look really good. As I mentioned, employee and volunteer appreciation party is December sixteenth. Um, that includes. And already, if not, we are still in the process of. Uh, it'll be potluck, bring a dish and ugliest sweater contest as well as a white elephant if you have one for the white elephant gift. Um, I think it was like a maximum twenty dollars for that. That's just fun. We're not going crazy. Our periodic safety inspection for the period, upper, for the upper dam was approved by DNR. And Ryan Johnson and Todd Cook were here last week for a water treatment plan realization visit. Todd is also hoping to come back over one VSW and CRW here. Uh, he's really, um, if you haven't had a chance to meet him, I, let me know. Uh, next time he's here, I'll, I'll try to get you guys together with him. He's really been a huge asset for the city. I've appreciated him coming on, coming on and the more often he visits. Um, the more projects he gets involved with and he really likes to stay busy, so. I don't think our public works crew was expecting it. I certainly wasn't, but they did get into this little lift station and started servicing it. And doing some maintenance on that infrastructure, get, they have a nice little perks list going and getting things done, so. He's a, he's really proactive about coming over and making sure things are getting taken care of. SPD truck is back and I think everything else we've kind of got over. I just wanna point out that next, not next week, but uh the December eighth through the twelfth. Uh, is that AML winter conference. Council members Taylor and Coleman are both attending part of, are all of that, as well as city clerk Diamond and myself, so. It'll be limited staff at the city office and some of the upcoming city council business. You guys have worked through a lot lately in the last couple of weeks, so thank you so much for that. Um, there's still a work session for the CIP planned for December first. That's next Monday. It's looking really, really great. I hope you guys are gonna be pleased. We had a suggestion from council member Barber to reformat. Uh, the way the projects were listed and it was a great suggestion and um and I think hopefully it makes it just a little bit easier. To read and go through and then, of course, there's new projects uh for you guys to evaluate and see if you want to include in the plan. There will also be a public comment forum and that's scheduled for December second. It might change to December third. I'm waiting to hear back from AML. Just to confirm, um, they didn't respond today yet, so I know everybody's busy with holidays, but. Hoping we get a response here tomorrow and and double checking that that comprehensive plan is where it's supposed to be with that. As well as a, do you guys want to do a brief city council priorities work session prior to December fifteenth? Do every year. There's a lot of changes. Uh, you guys give me the feedback on on how you want to do that.
No more meetings. You guys wanna just keep the same priorities? Uh, and huh?
I don't know if we're gonna have me with, yeah, we'll, we can see, but I, I, if we're gonna do that, I'd like to combine that meeting with. Another meeting, uh, so we don't have to have, do a separate one.
Well, why don't we just do it on the first?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. If we wanna do that, let's plan on that.
Okay. I don't think it'll be that intense cuz I think you, you guys have a pretty good system from last year.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we do need to have an ordinance appropriating some funds for the remaining spray foam installation project. Um, and that'll come up. I'm just waiting for the rest of that project to be complete, to make sure there's nothing else. Um, that shows up that that shouldn't be in there. Otherwise, I think you guys have seen everything else. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Heidi. Appreciate all the updates. Any questions or comments for the city manager regarding tonight's um city manager report? All right. That'll take us to item O informational items not requiring action. Item O one, the city manager and city clerk will be out of the office the week of December eighth, twenty twenty-five for the annual AML. Uh, local government conference. Item O two, the December eighth regular meeting is canceled due to staff and council member attendance. Of the AML Local Government Conference. Item O three, a special city council meeting is tentatively scheduled for uh December fifteenth. Item O four, a council work session on the draft CIP plan is tentatively scheduled for December first, twenty twenty-five. Item O five, a public comment forum on the final draft. The twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan update will be held on Tuesday, December second, twenty twenty-five. Heidi, is that already, um, have you already got the notice out for that? What time is that gonna be? Is that gonna be in the council chambers, I assume?
I do not have the notice out for that. That was the one I was waiting to confirm with AML. That was the last week we talked. We said December second, but I uh. Wanted to confirm with them today, uh, if that's, that's still a go. Standing on council chamber, evening meeting. And not requiring, yeah, uh, it's not a requirement for council and planning commission members to attend, however, always encouraged cuz. Uh, that that'll be the first showing of that final draft. Yeah, there'll be a thirty-day public comment period. This will kind of kick it off. Then it'll come back to the council as well, uh, with any additional comments that are received and hopefully uh eventually adoption.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, that includes uh item O, all of our informational items not requiring action. Item P, executive session, none tonight. Item Q, council and mayor comments concerning items not on the agenda. Peyton?
No.
Okay, uh, let's see, Barber?
Yes.
Okay, uh, let's see, Langbart?
No comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Coleman?
No comments at this time either. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, thanks to the staff. Appreciate everything. Um. Item R, our next meeting, next regular meeting will be on, um, let's see, okay, that Monday, December eighth, that's obviously will be canceled. Um, special meeting is tentatively scheduled for December fifteenth as we had previously stated. I will look for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn and we do have a second. Any objection? Hearing none, we are adjourned. All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thanks. Have a good one.